I would like to call the order, the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for November 23rd, 2022. The clerk, please call the roll.
Baldwin.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Very good, we have quorum. Item three, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Do we have any? Guest speakers? None. That takes us to item five, public comment on agenda items only. Anyone in the audience know? Anyone on the line, Jamie, that would like to address the council? Right, I think with that, we can close public comment. For the first period, I think this is to item six, discussion items. Item A, organizational meeting to discuss committee commission chairperson appointments. Ryan, thanks for joining us from afar. Kyle, thanks for helping kind of be available to us as we go through this. Ryan, do you want to kick things off on this, or do you want me just to kind of dive into it?
Mr. Chair, I think you're pretty well versed. You have your supportive city staff and you have Kyle to help you out along the way here.
Okay, okay, great. Well, then I'll just kick it off. I appreciate all of you that have reached out to me independently to discuss boarding commission appointments as we move forward as a team. And I'd like to start, I think, with the one that's most near and dear to my heart, which is Parks. As much as I love chairing the Parks Committee, it's a very busy committee. It meets during the work week or through the work day. And I don't believe I can really continue to do that. So I will be tendering my resignation from the Parks Committee probably within the next day or so. Apparently, I can either do it to the superintendent Scott Herbert, or I can do it to the council as a whole. Maybe I'll just resign for all of your benefit. But in my discussions with all of you, I'll just be frank, Helen has thrown her hat in the ring. She and I have had a fairly lengthy conversation about it. And although Helen is new to the council, I personally think Helen would be an excellent addition to Parks and Public Works. She will add another representative to the other side of the river. She was actually with me and Lauren on the tour of Park Street organized by Mr. Medler and Jane Underwood. And I think with Helen's, you know, passion for that side of the community, which I think we can do a better job of listening to and interacting with. So I think with Helen and Ruth Johnson on Parks and Public Works, it could be quite powerful. And, you know, there's a significant budget also associated with Parks and Public Works. So I think Helen's background as a CPA with municipal audit experience, I think, could be very useful in that role. So obviously, this is something I will put forward, Mr. Manager, on Monday. But of course, it will be open for a vote by the council.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, great. And so that's that piece. I've also had really, I think, good, robust discussions with a couple of you on planning. Both Garnet and Russ have expressed an interest in planning. I would love to have both of you on planning if I could. I asked council to explore it to see if it was possible. Council has informed us that it's not possible. And we also have the added complication that Russ, when he was named to the council, was not voted in as the member of the Planning Commission, which technically we were supposed to do. So we never did vote on an ex officio or a council rep for for planning. So it's a difficult decision. And once again, I would welcome a frank and civil discussion about it. I found both Garnet and Russ to be excellent on planning. Garnet served in the role before. Russ currently serves in the role as a member of the Planning Commission. And it's a tough choice, it really is. And this is not a reflection on anybody's past service to the community on planning at all. It is a reflection on what I think we will be looking at in terms of emerging issues going forward. I've spoken to Steve Mann, the Chair of the Planning Commission. He would be happy with either of you serving on planning. And once again, it's a very difficult decision. But what I intend to do will be to put forward Garnet for Planning Commission because I think she has a unique set of skills that will be useful to us in the short term rental issue. Her connections to the municipal league, I think, will be useful in addition to her other connections with other elected officials at multiple levels of government in the state of Michigan. So once again, this is not punitive. This is not picking favorites. This is really what the English call horses for courses. And I really think right now, for what we have emerging, I do think that we would be best served with me nominating Garnet on Monday for Planning Commission. And once again, no disrespect at all to Russ. Your service has been wonderful for planning. And I would, of course, continue to welcome a robust, open, civil discussion about this.
We're saying that council, our lawyer for the city is saying that we can't have two on.
Yeah, Kyle, do you want to sort of share with us your analysis?
That's correct. The interesting thing about appointments of Planning Commission, so the Planning Enabling Act actually does allow cities to have two. However, your city code under section 3132 does not allow two members of city council to be on the Planning Commission. So that is why you cannot have two on the Planning Commission.
Okay, so that's why a choice has to be made.
Yeah, I mean, I really, I honestly, I went to council and to Ryan and Ryan early on in the process saying, if we can find a way to have two representatives of council for added continuity, because, you know, Russ is on council on planning. Garn served on planning prior to 2019, when I believe Mayor Truster moved her off of planning. I would love the continuity. I believe Russ's term expires in July of next year. You know, I wish there was a way that that could carry on. But I really do think we need to get Garnet in the mix sooner rather than later on this, given some of the issues incoming before us. So it's, you know, this is one of the crappy jobs about being the mayor. You have to make these hard decisions. And, you know, once again, I really feel this is what is best for the community. But it will be for all of you as council when I put that forward to to make your views known when you vote on this and the other appointment.
Mr. Mayor, could I make comment, please?
Please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time to listen. I sent an email last night to the mayor, copied the city manager, as well as Steve Mann, the Chairman of the Planning Commission. Here's my statement. Dear Mr. Mayor, I plan to continue to serve as the duly elected Sagatuck City Council Representative to the Planning Commission. My role as city council representative to the Planning Commission does not come up for discussion until my term expires on 11/123. If you go onto the city website, you'll see underneath the Planning Commission tab that that is my term. Any effort to replace me as a city council representative in advance of that date would be unprecedented. I look forward to working with Chairman Manns and the other commissioners and achieving the goals we have set for 2023. The issue that's being brought up regarding my not being the official representative of the council was unknown to me when I wrote this email. This is new information for me, as well as for some others I've talked with. This seems to be something that has not been needed before. If that had been an error last fall, when council, when I was elected to council, I was appointed to the Planning Commission, which is my second go around with the Planning Commission. I served previously for four or five years. So I've got great experience with the Planning Commission. Was that I was appointed in July of 2021. I ran for council, was elected at the swearing in ceremony on the first organization meeting like we're having today. It was never mentioned that I needed to resign and be reappointed as the official representative of the council. If that had been the protocol, I absolutely would have followed that. I would have put myself into the mix. I would have said, that's absolutely what we need to do. That was never mentioned. So the fact that I am not serving as the official representative of the council is news to me. Two is, I would also stop for a moment and look at my record on the Planning Commission. We have had a fair amount of turnover. We have two openings currently. And continuity and consistency in the Planning Commission membership is incredibly important. There's a lot of important issues going on, some of which the mayor's alluded to. I feel uniquely suited, given my years in the community. My family has been here for, since the 1880s. I grew up here. I have a unique understanding of this community and its residents and its development that I'm just a beneficiary of that because no one else has that time that's sitting on the Planning Commission. And I really think it's, at this point, if it's just an official designation, I ask for your support to be made the official representative. I'm sitting on the Planning Commission. I'm doing great work. I receive support from all the planning commissioners and I'm excited about what we're doing.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And once again, I, you know, I really regret that this error occurred. I don't think any of us wished that we would have been in this situation.
Easily resolved. Dominate me.
Thank you. So moving on, the other issue is, you know, with Lauren taking on the pro tem role, she and I have had some conversations about that. And actually, her history term on the History Commission expired this month.
Yeah. I took on for Garnet when she left Historic District to take on the mayor role.
So I don't, we don't necessarily need to decide that on Monday. I think we can go for, you know, another couple of weeks without a member council elect to the History Commission. Because, you know, once again, I, with all candor, Russ, I would like to offer you that role should should you not be selected as the planning rep. So I would like to just kind of reserve that. Lauren has expressed an interest in moving over to the Harbor Authority when an opening occurs there. I think Mr. Truster's term ends in the spring. I have February. I haven't heard from him yet on that. But I would like to leave that open because, you know, Russ, you've absolutely distinguished yourself on the radar project. And you're absolutely right. Your long tenure and your family's tenure in the community really lends itself to the important issues of the Historic Commission. And indeed, I think that would also be useful, you know, because a number of the planning issues will actually happen in the Historic District. So I would, I would, once again, out of all respect and admiration, ask that you consider that should you have the time to do history. But we'll leave that for another time. In closing, on boards and commissions, Ryan, welcome back from your trip. Any news to report on the trip? Is no, no problems with immigration or passports?
Camels. No, an excellent trip. The camels were very kind to me, but though, great people, fantastic culture, very hospitable people and generous. Explored basically the southern portion of Morocco is fantastic. So thank you for your welcome back and patience while I was gone. And thank you for Ryan for covering all my duties while I was gone as well, so.
Well, I know it was a longstanding trip that you had committed to prior to joining us. So I'm glad you were able to get that in. But I would ask you now, now that you're back, we do have a number of openings on the Boards and Commission. Fortunately, we are having a lot of people step up with volunteering to serve. I think at last count, we have at least six application and four for planning and one for ZBA and one for history, which I think are areas where we do have some vacancies. So I think that is useful as soon as we can arrange interviews with the applicants and the chairs of these commissions, that would be great. With that, I'm open to further discuss item A. If anybody has anything they'd like to share on that.
We do have a Historic District meeting on December 1st. So I don't know what that means for me as far as my term being expired and whether I should be there or not.
Ryan Heiss, can I leave that in your capable hands on how you want to handle that? He's muted, I think.
He's muted.
But he's nodding. So I'm going to take that as a yes, Ryan, okay? Yeah, thumbs up will work too. All right, all right.
Mr. Mayor, I just do want to note that Kent Truster's term on the Harbor Authority expires 9/2026.
Really?
September 2026 is what it says on the website.
Okay.
I don't know if that's been updated because I thought I looked at a more recent list.
Yeah, just reading what's published.
Yeah, yeah, I think we had the similar issue with planning.
I can double check that.
Jamie, would you double check? Because we saw a document that said you wrapped up on July 1 with planning. So there may be some inconsistencies between the website and what we actually voted on.
The July term for him was what Marsha Casper's term was going to be.
Oh, okay, okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. With that, any other discussion on?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Certainly, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor. And that is part of the responsibility that comes with your role as mayor, is you get to make these decisions. As I got to make them as Mayor Beckins before me got to make them, and as Mayor Truster before him got to make them. I think when Ms. Leo and I joined council, we were pretty much delegated to other responsibilities. So and we happily sat there and said we will serve at the pleasure of mayor. So just so. So I support you, whatever you do.
Well, thank you, Garnet. And once again, you know, I'll make the hard decision to put the names forward, but it will be for the majority of the council to vote on. So we will, we will, we will, you know, honor that process.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a point of order is that at that nominating process, there can be other nominations made.
Yes, there can.
Garnet, you were Chair of the Planning Commission. Is that correct? And how many years did you serve on planning?
Two years as Chair. Four years on Planning Commission in total. So and I was also on the Board of Review, also the Chair. So prior to joining council. So I, you know, personally, I don't feel like I need to sit here and explain my qualifications because I've been actively involved in the city for a long time, ever since I moved here. And I'll let that speak for itself.
Thank you, Garnet. Thank you, Holly. If there's no further discussion on 6A, that would take us to 6B, the Spear Street Launch Agreement. Ryan Heiss, do you want to tee this one up at all? I think it's something we've seen before. I don't believe there's any changes, but go for it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is an annual agreement that we have with Spear Street, a street end, and speaks for itself. This will be queued up for your Monday meeting. Everybody answer any questions if I can.
So obviously, the dates will change on this. We'll have to update the dates. And is it only just a yearly renewal? There's no like five year renewal or anything like that?
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, Ms. Stanton. Go ahead.
Oh, no, that was it.
Okay, yeah, so we have to be careful. We can't extend leases for too long. I can't remember exactly what the rules are with our charter and/or state law. But yeah, this is something has to be reviewed quite frequently. We did look and, and the reason I know this is the Redwater Group at the Butler had asked to do a longer extension. And the answer was no, without doing a deep dive into our charter and changing some rules and regulations, which would be, we'd have to take it to a vote of the people. So I can, I can talk a little bit about, a little bit more about that on Monday if you'd like. It's annoying because staff doesn't love it either because we have to review this on a, you know, a frequent basis. But those are the rules that the city put in front of us.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please.
So just for clarification on page two, and this is also for the manager, under term, the term would then be whatever date we vote on it then for a year. So it will be a year's term then, just for clarification.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Mayor, question to Manager Heiss. Hey, Ryan. Question on this. Has this been shared with Steel Enterprises, right? Is the?
Yeah, they present that to us and then so they, we're, we talk about this every year in advance of the meeting. So they know it's.
Right, I'm just wondering if the Lisi has had any feedback or interested in changing any terms and conditions of this agreement? Or have you had that conversation with Mr. Steel? Mr. Steel, right?
I may have had conversations months ago, but no, no changes that I can recall.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any further discussion on 6B? Hearing none. This opens up our second public comment period. I don't see anybody in the room chomping at the bit to comment. We do have Dan Fox on the line. So Dan, please just identify yourself for the record and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Mayor. Dan, perspective on the decision you're trying to reach appointment to the Planning Commission since I think I'm the only, certainly the only one in the room you're in and in room. Who has served on the Planning Commission with.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear Dan Fox?
Dan, not to interrupt you, but we're having some connectivity issues. We're only hearing parts of what you're saying.
You might want to start over again.
Dan, I'm happy to let you start over again if you want to change location. If you're on a wireless device, that may be the problem. We've only caught a few words that you've said. If you want to start again, we'll restart the clock for you. Yeah, maybe try a different room.
I'm trying to get closer to my, the source of my internet connectivity. Now I'm in a closet.
That does sound, I think it's better. We'll restart the clock for you, Dan. Thank you.
It's better now?
It seems to be, yeah. Why don't we try, try again? We've restarted the clock three minutes for you.
Thank you. I don't, I'm not usually granted a restart, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, I was saying, Dan Fox of Sagatuck. I think I am unique or have the benefit of a unique perspective since I am the only person in the room virtually or in person who has served on the Planning Commission with both of the two individuals mentioned for the possible appointment or reappointment. Garnet Lewis and Russ Gardner. I have seen both in action. And I will tell you, in terms of Russ Gardner, I think it's wise to strongly consider not only his time on the on the Planning Commission, but also his service as a mayor and his time in the community. When the Planning Commission lost Rich Crawford, who had similar tenure in Sagatuck, I mentioned to you guys at that time, that's a big loss for the Planning Commission. That loss of perspective is important and it's particularly important on the Planning Commission. I think that is an argument in, as well, in favor of Russ Gardner. I, as I say, I served with both. I have no, I, I have respect for both people's service on the Planning Commission and I have absolutely no no complaint about either person. I think they both served honorably, but I do not understand why on a procedural whim or whatever the hell it is, there is any need to change out Russ for Garnet at this point, particularly as you've mentioned, you've got places on other commissions where there is a need to replace the currently serving member. So I would urge you to be very careful about your vote. Losing a longtime Sagatuck citizen on the Planning Commission who has faithfully served and honorably served, even in favor of another honorable citizen, if that's the case, I think is a mistake. And I think you should, you should consider the the loss, the potential loss, very, very seriously. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dan. I, I see a couple iPhones on any other comment from the online audience? Don't see hands raised. Okay, with that then, I think we can conclude public comment. Moving on to item eight, no correspondence. That leads us to item nine, council comments. Welcome, Helen, and kick it off.
Thank you. I do feel welcome at today's meeting. It is my first. It was exciting and gratifying to be sworn in today. And I want to thank the citizens of Sagatuck for trusting me. I'm going to work hard to make sure that you believe that ever in that trust and I am very grateful. I'm also excited to be considered for the Parks and Public Works Committee and would love to further serve our community there. Thank you.
Gregory, you're next.
Hi there. Well, this is during public comment. Of course, everybody knows they said thank you. I've been saying it all week long, the last few weeks. I'm still saying it and I appreciate the support of our town of looking forward to moving forward. The great team here, I've gotten to know everybody so well. I know that we can and will work to make great things happen in our small towns. Since this is my point of comment, I'd like to remind everybody that the annual tree lighting is this Friday at 6:00 PM. Will be the countdown where we'll have the annual Christmas tree lit up. I hope that they've invited you to help Santa.
Yes, you have seen.
I know, I can count. The elves have been busy over at the, getting the star ready. So that'll be in unison with the Christmas tree. We're looking forward to that. And also, we're looking forward to the milk, chocolate and hot cookies brought to you by Milk on Realty.
Thank you, thank you, Gregory. Holly, if you can top that, please.
I really can't. But I am so excited that Helen and Gregory are joining council. And I just want to welcome you both. And I look forward to working with both of you and your addition to this council. I'm very excited to what both of you bring to the table. And I think we're very honored that you're with us. So welcome. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and it should be a good year. I echo what Holly said, welcome you guys. It'll be nice to have new voices on council. And I appreciate both of you running for it because it's not fun to run. But it's really great that you guys are a part of this and I look forward to working with you guys in the next year. Please be safe on your Thanksgiving travels and remember to shop local.
There you go. Very good.
Welcome, Mr. Cratchit. Those of you that don't know Gregory is Mr. Cratchit in this year's Christmas Carol production. He happens to be in Evening Mary to my wife, who's Mrs. Cratchit, so.
I agree.
Yes, welcome, welcome, Gregory and welcome, Helen. Thank you. Glad that you're here and look forward to working with you. On the star, interestingly enough, this is the 10 year anniversary of the replacement of the old star. I'll make more comment on Monday night, so there's more people that hear the message. But there's a few people to thank and that group still goes up there annually. They were up there earlier this week. The mayor happened to know, so light coming on, he says, hey, are you testing the stars? Said the engineering group's up there. They actually do, they test it and they inspect it. So I'll make a little bit more comment about that 10 years that thing's been up there. So and they do great work on it. And again, as Gregory mentioned, Friday at 6:00 PM, the elves will be helping get that star turned on when the switch is flipped. Also to a question for Manager Heiss. There was a comment made at the last meeting about a community survey being, being published or whatever the terminology is. Is that going to be something that's going to be shared with council in advance of it going out? So we can understand what the questions are being asked, who's being surveyed and what's being asked?
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
Yeah, yeah, please do, I think.
Yeah, the survey that we put out last year seemed to serve us pretty well. So I can put that same, those same survey questions on the agenda for Monday. So you can have a look at it. Yeah.
That's all. Thanks.
All right, with that, congratulations. Welcome also, Scott and Lauren, you're back. Good job. Congratulations. I'll reiterate that on Monday. Thank you so much. On a positive fun note, if you haven't noticed, on Saglaville, the Facebook page, Birdie Holly and I have teamed up to do the first and hopefully annual holiday decorating contest for homes, if you will. Ever since I've been here, what, almost eight years? I've heard this kind of little fussiness about, oh, we used to do this way back in the day. Why aren't we doing this? So Birdie and I was like, we've had enough, let's light it up. So a couple of different prizes, categories. The judges will not be disclosed, so they will not be bothered. But Birdie and I sat down and chatted about that today. So we're really encouraging folks to get out and get signed up for that. So good. So I really appreciate her willingness to do that.
Thank you. Well, this is, this is the season to give thanks and to be grateful. And Helen and Gregory, I am very grateful for your service to our city. Thank you for joining the council. Thank you for the wisdom of the voters to, to vote you onto the council. Congratulations again to Lauren. And thank you for your confidence in electing me mayor. But I am very grateful for all of you here. I am very grateful for you, Ryan, for you, Jamie, for you, Ryan, on the line, for the service Kyle, you and Chris give us. I'm very grateful for that. And I'm grateful for this community. This is really a wonderful, unique committee, community. And I am just very grateful to be part of it. And I'm grateful for my family, of course, and my friends, many of whom live here. And so. And so in this season, I just would like to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Leo. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Voice vote, please.
Oh, voice vote? All in favor?
Yes.
Hi. Meeting adjourned.